I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the October 4th, 2011 meeting of the council to order, please, with the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Bridge, Bender, Stenberg, McDonald, Doyle, Finsland, Herrick, McKenzie, Brown, Wiki, and Seather.
For today's in the quorum, I'll ask for the consideration with regard to the minutes of September 20th, 2011. Heard a motion, second for approval. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 5.1 is a resolution to, a public hearing to consider a resolution introduced by the Public Works Department authorizing the following alley to be blacktop in 2012 between Sixth and Seventh Avenues East and East Fifth Street and the railroad tracks.
At this time, I'll call for a public hearing and ask those who wish to speak in favor of to do so now. Those who wish to speak in favor of may do so now. And for the third and last time, those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now. Hearing none, those that wish to speak in opposition to may do so now. Those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. For the final time, those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. Hearing and seeing none, I'll call the public turn into a close and ask the pleasure. Heard the motion at second, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion opposed? Motion carried.
Item number six is the consent agenda.
Heard the motion at second for approval. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.1, Finance Director Vito is submitting the 2011 general fund budget adjustment.
Director Vito.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a correction to this, and Counselor Herrick pointed it out to me. I think I misinterpreted the, on the top of the second page, Historical Society of Douglas County, he reminded me that in the Finance Committee it was to begin refunding that in the year 2012, not 2011. So what we could do, if you're in agreement, is simply put that $10,000 down into the contingency line item. Thank you.
Any discussion? You want to address that independently? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
We didn't have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm rushing there.
I'll make the motion.
You've heard the motion at second, any discussion?
To include that.
To include the, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
7.2, Assistant Finance Director Zahowski is submitting the 2012-2013 library budget.
Heard the motion at second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried and so adopted.
7.3, Human Resources Administrator Kanasny is recommending to confirm Nathan Johnstead to the street superintendent position effective with his acting date of September 12th, 2011.
You've heard the motion at second, discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
7.4, Parks and Recreation Administrator Morgan is submitting adjustments to the 2011 capital improvement program in the Parks and Recreation Division.
Administrator Morgan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think you can see from my memo to you that I'm suggesting rearranging some of the project funds by delaying the municipal forest trail lighting to a later date and redistributing those funds to the Osagi Trail Improvement Project, purchasing some Christmas decorations to replace some ones that have deteriorated, and then making a match to Rotary's gift in the Japanese garden.
Counselor McKenzie.
First, I'll make a motion to approve 7.4.
Heard the motion at second to approve, discussion, counselor?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, Mary, I think that was a very smart adjustment that you made, seeing as how that electrical part of it was going to be double, more than double, and it just makes more sense to put that towards projects that we've already started. So I think that was a great move, so appreciate that.
Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, Mary, just a question for you. Is this going to be put back in to the 2012-2017 CIP, or?
That's a great question, Counselor Herrick. It isn't currently in the next six-year capital plan because, of course, we thought we might be able to accomplish it this year. So what I would propose to you is that if the city is successful in getting some grants for any of the park projects, that the grant dollars would offset dollars we could reposition for the ski trail lighting. But, of course, we have to have enough. You know, it has to be.
Sure.
So that's what I would propose to you as we move through the six years.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
7.5, Parks and Recreation Administrator Morgan is recommending to award the contract for the Osagi Trail Improvements to Badger Excavating an amount of $31,157.
Heard the motion at second, discussion? President Olson.
Mayor, I just got a question, looking at these bids here, the city is buying all the material, and from low bid to second bid, there's a difference of $17,443 on less than a mile of improvement. Is there, was there any breakdown that would explain the big difference? It's almost 33 percent.
No, Counselor, not in the bid, it was a lump sum bid.
Is there prevailing wage on this job?
I do not believe so. Is Nancy present?
It's a city-funded job, there better be prevailing wage on it. Yeah, since 1988.
The prevailing wage threshold was changed on July 1st. The new threshold for single trade projects is now 48,000; for multi-trade, it's 100,000. This will not be applied.
Is this city funding alone, or is there state funding?
It is city funding.
City funding, and there is an ordinance on record from 1988 that says that prevailing wages will be used.
The state law in July 1st also repealed all city prevailing wage requirements. The ordinance, it specifically says they're repealed.
I think that's crazy.
Was that part of Act 10 or Act 34?
The one that was passed on July 1st. I actually have it here, if you want to see it.
I'm just curious.
I don't have which one it is, but all city ordinances have been repealed, I've had to take it out of the contract.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I guess I'd like to know how come we can't have more stringent ordinance, more stringent of an ordinance than the state law we've always had in the past. I guess I can assume why based on some things that happened in Madison, but this isn't going to be done this year, is it?
Yeah, I'm hopeful to complete the work this fall.
Okay. Well, I'd like to know a little more about it, I guess, but.
I'm sorry, Counselor, more about the project or more about Act 32?
Well, I want the project done, but, you know, that, we're sacrificing people's wages doesn't seem quite right to me.
Do you, Counselor?
Yeah, just a question, so this is basically just tearing out the trail? What are we looking at for this project, or?
The project consists of excavating the asphalt and base, the existing asphalt and base on approximately 4,500 lineal feet of trail, and then transporting materials that we will purchase separately to the site and placing fill and compacting the fill along the trail.
Is this something, I mean, that, I know you're looking at getting this completed this spring, would this have to be completed this spring, or is this something possibly might be able to be excavated during the wintertime when, you know, there's not all the snow processing going on?
Well, generally speaking, I think the Finance Director likes to complete our capital plans within the three years.
So it is under that, then?
Generally speaking, I think that's true.
What we usually do at the end of, at the end of each of our rounds of capital improvement programs, of which were in 2009 to 2011, we kind of try to close that out. Generally, they end up very, very close, because some projects will come over, some projects will come under. I think in this instance, if you want to ask or request that this be, these funds be held over and reserved for 2012, I don't see any problem with that.
Attorney Olson.
Two questions there. The bid to the contractor is $31,157,000, and that is for labor only?
It's for labor and equipment to excavate the trail base, Counselor, and then to transport materials that we will purchase to the site and place the fill, and, you know, it's the prep for the base.
Yeah, okay, I understand all that.
Okay.
Second part of my question is, what is the cost of the materials?
Approximately $15,000 bucks.
So we're at $46,000.
It would have been a multi-trade, because you're going to have truck drivers, you're going to have laborers, and there's going to be some other, perhaps repositioning some culverts, it's a multi-trade. Believe me, I checked very carefully, because I wanted to make sure that we were in compliance. So.
Yeah, and I don't, I'm not questioning that, I'm sure you did.
Yeah, I know, and the new threshold is $100,000, so.
We would, the contractor would also be laying some fabric in the trail bed as well.
And seating, that type of thing, reseating if necessary, so.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Call the roll, please.
Counselor Bridge. Counselor Stenberg. I'm sorry, I didn't hear. No, okay. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Doyle. Counselor Finsland. Counselor Herrick. Counselor McKenzie. Counselor Brown.
Motion lost, unwanted majority.
Item 10.1 is a resolution introduced by the Plan Commission setting a public hearing November 15th in the Government Center to vacate streets and alleys in the vicinity of 20th Avenue East and East 22nd Street. I'm sorry.
Sir, motion. Counselor McKenzie.
Just under, under number nine, Counselor, business by counselors, first.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Jeff, I just, I just wanted to commend, you know, all of Public Works, everybody that works for Public Works for the job that was done on that 21st Street, right, right up. You know, the leading up to it, on both sides, is great. I've noticed that the, that job is much smoother, farther, further surpasses what RJS did on that, all of the 21st Street, all the way to the end of the park. So it's very, very noticeable, it was done quickly, but the quality of the job was so good, so, you know, please, you know, to Todd and to everybody that worked on that project, I just wanted to show my appreciation and, you know, just to commend everybody for just a great project and a great use of the money. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor, I'll be sure and pass that along.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
Okay.
Is there a motion, second?
No, there wasn't a motion at second for 10.1, yeah.
Heard a motion at second, discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10.2 is a resolution introduced by the Plan Commission setting a public hearing November 1st to rezone five parcels of land in the vicinity of 1817 North 28th Street from R2 to Family Residential to C2 Highway Commercial District.
What is the pleasure? Heard a motion in multiple seconds, discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10.3 is a resolution introduced by the Plan Commission setting a public hearing November 15th to vacate two alleys between Banks and Tower Avenues and North 26th and 28th Streets.
What is the pleasure? Heard a motion at second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10.4 is a resolution providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of $6,420,000 general obligation corporate purpose bond, Series 2011B of the City of Superior, Wisconsin, establishing their terms and conditions directing their execution and delivery and creating a debt service account and awarding the sale.
Ask the pleasure. Heard the motion at second, discussion? Hearing none, Director Vito.
I was just going to make a quick comment, Counselor Herrick had another question for me before the meeting, and it was something like, are we issuing more and more debt? Well, this is, this and the next resolution, this is a bond, the next is notes, and there's really three steps, and the council has been moving through them today as the final step. First, you did an initial resolution of intent to issue debt, the next meeting, you approved selling the bonds and the notes, and that sale is what happened today and what you're approving today, and both of these are at interest rates that I've never seen. The bonds are at a low, excuse me, low bid, the interest was 2.688 percent. We had eight bidders from across the United States, there's a lot of interest in our debt issues, a lot of competition for this, and a portion of this issue is refunding some debt that was issued before, and we'll be generating about $132,000, $133,000 in savings from that. And as long as I've got the microphone here, on the next issue, the interest rate's actually 1.66 percent, and we had seven bidders, so it's a lot of interest.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10.5 is a resolution providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of $1,710,000 general obligation promissory notes, Series 2011C of the City of Superior, Wisconsin, establishing their terms and conditions directing their execution and delivery and creating a debt service account and awarding the sale.
What is the pleasure? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10.6 is a resolution introduced by Counselor Brown opposing the closure of the Duluth Mail Processing and Distribution Plant and Branch Post Offices.
You've heard the motion at second, I'm sorry.
Yes, the reason for this resolution is, right now, you know, our government should be looking at producing jobs, not laying off people, you know, and the mail service is one of the cheapest services we get. You can send a mail to California, Alaska for 42 cents, you know, how do you get anything cheaper than that? Now you've got a guy showing up at your door every day, that looks at your house, are good neighbors, you know, we just, we can't afford to do this. It's just not the right thing in the right time to be doing things like this. So I think we really need to support our postal people. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, just, I don't know how technical it is, but just a correction, there's a typo on that. Under the second whereas, where it says whereas the Duluth Superior area would stand to lose 250, I believe the word job should be put in there from the closure?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 11.1 is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Committee amending the traffic code Schedule A stops by adding Cumming Avenue at North 22nd Street.
You've heard the motion at second, discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
11.2, an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Committee amending the city code, the traffic code Schedule I, streets excluded from calendar parking by adding East 6th Street, 1203 and 1205.
You've heard the motion at second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
11.3 is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Committee amending the traffic code Schedule H, no parking on school days between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM by adding a daycare zone, parking zone at 1505 Ohio Avenue.
What is the pleasure? Heard the motion at second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 12 is business by public, and it looks as though we have several people signed up to speak under business by public.
And folks, as the first person's name is called, just remind those of you in the audience that by ordinance, we restrict comments from the public to three minutes in duration, so I'm the timekeeper, I will simply hit my light when we're at that mark, so as not to interrupt you in mid-thought.
Lawrence Cotier, Cotier?
My name is Lawrence Cotier, I'm a retired game warden. I moved back into Superior about 1994, and my home is in the Nijay Trailer Court. My quest, I just have a few questions. I don't expect you to answer them while I'm here, because this is my three minutes, you answer them on your time. Is the city closing in the Nijay Trailer Park? Are they going to eliminate the Nijay Trailer Park? If so, why? If not, what are they doing? Who made the decision, one way or the other? And what was it based on? Was it based on complaints? Excuse me, and if it was based on complaints, were they by residents or non-residents of the park? Did they contact the people that made the decisions here? Did they contact the park or any of the people in the park? Do they realize they're putting approximately 38 families out of their homes if they close it? At a time when we should be, it should be the city's mission to find homes for people, not make them homeless? If this is a financial thing, what happened to all the money that they've been collecting since 1948? Every trailer in there has paid a trailer tax, there's been a personal property tax on everything in there. Why hasn't that money been used? Not 10 cents has been used of that money in our trailer park. I've been there 18 years, I've never seen a city employee in there. I guess that's about all I have, I just want to know what's happening and why, and I'm sure the rest of these people have more questions than I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to apologize if I'm slaughtering your name.
I've been in this area for about 20 years now. Started, came to college here in 1992, and left for a few, for a short time, came back. And my family moved back to the area, too, we've lived in the Nijay Trailer Park for the last number of years. Kind of concerned, too, with, you know, a lot of people that live in that place that, you know, growing up there their whole lives, you know, and myself going to school here and seeing the city grow and seeing some of the city fall. And, you know, just the way it feels like we're, as residents, being treated in the trailer park, you know, that in some sense, it seems like the city's not really caring about us. And it's a lot of people, like he said, that, you know, there's about 38 families that are looking at, you know, what's going to happen tomorrow to us. You know, we don't know, we're all nervous and, you know, waiting to hear what, basically what the city has to say. And, you know, it's just, I mean, a lot of my questions are basically similar to what he had just had brought up, and thanks for your time.
Thank you.
That's Gail.
It's pronounced Gail. No. My name is Lois, and I'm a face that summers at the Nijay Trailer Park, and I graduated from East High School several years ago, and I have always loved Superior. But now that we are summering in the Nijay Campground Trailer Park, I wanted to bring my face in front of you to show you that we do have faces. We are not entities that are trailer trash. If you want to, and I would really appreciate it personally, if each and every one of you would get in your automobile and drive through the trailer parks that are available to low-income families, I want you to see the Nijay Campground, I want you to see how beautiful it is, how well-kept it is, how safe it is. I would appreciate having some consideration for some of these folks. Now, the trailers that they own are probably not the $78,000, $100,000 important things, but they are home, and they are important. And it's important that you see them and understand where they're coming from. They're upset, they're concerned, and I also want to show my face and say that Cindy and Dick Larson have built a community, not a trailer park, and that needs to be taken into account. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Brian Carlenberg.
Yes, good evening, city councilors and you people. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I've been in the Nijay Trailer Park for seven years, never have been a problem, the owners are helpful and friendly, and the owner spoke to me tonight and said that there has never been a city plow truck inside of our court. So we have not done anything to spend any extra money of the city's, we have been as much self-reliant as we can be, and the city has had very little knowledge of us, we're not visible, because we're keeping our park properly. our park properly. And my question is this. When you give us envelopes stating that if we want to pay our rent to the city treasurer, where is the paper document of a bill and the license to do so? And since the lease has expired, what authority on paper can you show us so that we can see your legal authority to do so? And there is no provision stated for any form of a receipt that I have read in your letter. And you can answer these questions at a future date because I know you have to formulate an answer and not a spontaneous one. And I would like to present this document to this council, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just got something that's short. I bought the trailer that we live in six years ago. Excuse me. It's my retirement home. I've got to move. People are going to hurt. It's not a threat. It's a promise. And I will legally do whatever I can to save that park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Ortman.
My parents' family had a trailer, and I moved into the Magic about eight years ago to Superior. I didn't grow up here. And, you know, I thought to myself, it was probably the best place for me to live. It was a very comfortable, quiet place, and I felt really at home there. And I don't understand what the plans are to, I mean, really, it's to destroy a community, a precious place to us. It's safe there. We've never had any problems. So I just wanted to let you know that that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just, we will address the questions as they're recorded formally because it's not timely right now to do so at this juncture of this meeting. The, the issue, or that the issue, the situation is that the lease that the current managers, if you will, have expired on October 1st. We had a meeting in mid-July in my office, and it was expressed by the Larsons that they fully intended to retire. And they have, I believe, designed to, desired to move to Duluth. That conversation, we were going to get back together. That didn't happen. I'll, I'll take the blame on part of the park, and likewise with them. Clearly, it was their desire to retire. We have not made any decision with regard to the trailer park, your residents. Nobody in this room is desirous, interested, or would ever try to interfere with your life, your residence, as it may be, or what you wish. Our, our situation here right now is that at the late date, we find ourselves without a manager of the, of the Mobile Home Park. That's a dilemma that we are facing. To accommodate you, we will act as the tentative, temporary manager until we have a manager on board. Do we want to be in the trailer court and park business? No. I'll, I'll give you a personal story. I didn't even know, I didn't remember that we even owned the land. And then I find my signature affixed to the lease back in 1981, which is now 30 years ago. Does the city want to own a Mobile Home Park? No, I don't believe we do. But on the other hand, we have no intention of disenfranchising anybody. And personally, coming from me, coming from the council, we, we do regret misinformation that's being passed around, and we will be working very closely with all of you to accommodate the future, your needs, and what, what the Mobile Home Park will be in the ensuing months. At no time is anybody being evicted. At no time, and right, at least for the foreseeable future, will anybody be asked to leave. So I apologize on behalf of the city. I apologize on behalf of other folks that may have offered misinformation, and I truly regret the struggles you're going through. Any change or perceived change in what person's life or their residence or occupation, what have you, is a difficult thing to do with, especially when nobody has all the facts because the facts are elusive. We are without a park, a trailer park manager. It is clear, it's been made clear to us repeatedly, that the Larsons are not interested in even a minimal extension of the lease. They have their reasons. I know they want to retire. They've, they've been, the park is, is very nice. I've driven through it a number of times. And I just want to express our willingness, interest, and sincere desire to work with everybody to a suitable end for everybody concerned. But once again, you folks have asked great questions, very, very thoughtful questions, and very direct questions, which they should be, and we will formulate responses in a formal fashion back to you. In the meantime, our city assessor, I believe, is the point person with regard to the questions you may have, the facilitation that may be required, and the immediate, if you will, management of the park. And I'll ask if anybody has further comment or, yes, sir?
Yes, thank you for letting me rebuttal. I would ask that if there is a party that is interested months prior to tonight, could they have a opportunity to have a lease? And you can answer that tonight or at the next meeting.
That's, that's an excellent question. And like I said, the meeting took place in, I believe, mid-July. I guess I realized, I, I heard the Larsons say they wanted to retire, and we didn't at that moment look to another party to manage the park. But we were hoping that we would have further dialogue with them prior to, what, a few days ago, and that didn't happen.
Well, then we'll have to get these facts clear because there is a party that's very willing to be the managers of that park.
We would like to know who that may be.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll come with more information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah, Mayor, based on, you know, your explanation, and that was, that was very, very nice, and thank you all for your, your input on this, on the subject. Based on what we just talked about here tonight, options and discussions, does it make sense to set up something in the near future, some sort of a public forum, or some sort of a setup, public setup so that we can have a question and answer, so that people can get these questions answered, they can ask more questions? You know, I know that we have to get more information as well, and so that's why I'm saying sometime here in, in the future. But I'm just wondering if that's a good suggestion to have some sort of a public forum?
I, I think that's well-received. We do need to get more information, though, as far as moving forward, if you will. Brad and Jason are working on that, and Attorney Prell are working on that daily, if you will. It's unfortunate, it's a situation. It's not timely, for sure. And we do intend to offer all the resources possible with regard to information dissemination and what we know as we know it.
I, yeah, I just think that the people deserve that, deserve the opportunity to be able to ask these questions. I know that they're very concerned. These are their homes. It's their castle. There's, I'm sure they're scared right now. So that's why I think that at some point we need to have some, some discussion so that everybody that lives there, if possible, could come and, and express their, their thoughts.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Sir, could you come up? We can't hardly hear back there. I'm hardly hearing anyway.
My name's Mark Snow. I'm a member, or I live at the park. You said the city doesn't want to own a Mobile Home Park. I think that's what you just said a little while ago. Does that mean the city doesn't want to manage a Mobile Home Park, which I certainly understand? You guys aren't set up that? Or does the city not want to own a piece of property that has a Mobile Home Park on it?
We do not want to own or manage a, a Mobile Home Park.
So that, I realize you don't want, so you don't want a piece of property owned by the city to be a Mobile Home Park?
That, we don't know. That, that decision is still out there. That decision has not been made.
Oh, okay. So you, it may continue to be a Mobile Home Park owned by the city?
That's very highly potential.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to a journalist as further comment by councilors. Heard the motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.